Let me call to order the meeting of Woodland Park Planning Mission Thursday, August 24th, 2023, at 6:30. First, I'll call to order and vocal.
Vice Chair Lee Brown.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Sean Nielsen.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
George Jones.
Here.
Don DeZellum.
Here.
And our Chair Ken Hartsfield is absent.
Okay, I'll do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, the next item is a work session code review project review and discussion focusing, I think primarily today on tables 4.02. You know, planning, planning director, would you like to introduce the topic?
I would, and I actually prepared a short presentation. I've got eight slides that I want to share with you all, and it's mostly to just kind of recap where we are and then provide some context for some other things that we have going on in our department. And kind of how these things were going to be tying together. So with that, the short version is what's happening?
All right.
Yeah, exactly, Larry. So right now, we've got a couple of different special projects that we're working on. And then on the left-hand side of the screen that I'm that we're working on. So the first one is this project, the Unified Development Code, to just revisit and plow through and reconstruct, reorganize our our current development regulations, and I'll touch base on that a little bit more here in a minute. The second big project that we're doing within our department relates to a permit tracking software program that we are in the process of implementing. And then the the third thing that we've got going on, which is not directly in the planning department, but is going to interact with our permit tracking ultimately is in Public Works, our city engineer Ben is working on Beehive is the company name, but an asset management software implementation. And that will ultimately help them with tracking work orders and status of infrastructure and age of all that kind of stuff. And then there's the rest of the stuff that we are normally doing. And on the right is a picture I took of basically my brain download that I did on one of the whiteboards in my office. So you don't have to worry about the details there. You've seen some of these projects. There's one or two that are coming up. They're in various states of process. And even behind the scenes from that, there's the the usual assortment of zoning development permits that we process related to just fences and sheds and decks and signs and all kinds of things. I think earlier, I'm going to get the number wrong, but Dave will correct me. Earlier today, he said through the end of August, at this point, we are like 250 some odd ZDPs, which is a good 25 or so above last year at this time, if I remembered what he told me correctly.
Very close, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I mostly listened. So.
How many single families have we done?
Dave's gonna have to answer that.
How many single families?
I don't get that number off.
Oh, okay.
So with the software implementation, the name of the program that we selected for our purposes in the the planning department is part of the Civic Plus suite of of things that they offer. We use them for a couple of other things already, I think specifically our website. And what we are picking up next is their planning and zoning module, and then a code enforcement module. And those do tie into a GIS, which we are, the city has been slowly developing behind the scenes. We have very, very minimal things in place at the moment. Dave has been one of the primary folks behind what we do have. So with these two particular programs, you're going to see that start to develop out more as we go forward. And the planners in the room, the hardcore folks know that ArcGIS has many, many capabilities. And when you get enough of the right data in there about your city, it lends itself to doing all kinds of other potential analyses, especially around policy development and implementation. So I said on the left side, that's the what we were calling almost like the front end of the process, the entitlement, how that gets there all the way through to once the infrastructure is in the ground, the warranty is done, and it's fully accepted by the city. And then from there, Public Works is really looking at it through their program, which is called Beehive. And that enables them to, you know, graphically keep track of, you know, where things are as well as the data behind, you know, like specific segments of pipe. How old is it? When was the last time it was replaced? This particular block or lane mile of highway, when was the last time it was seal coated or crack filled? It also allows them, if there was a work order that comes in, what needs attention to be able to track and monitor, you know, work orders in association with the work that they are doing for the city. And then back to permit tracking, Dave will recognize those pictures. It's a tutorial he had put together. Right now, we are very much in an analog borderline hybrid kind of situation where we still do a lot in paper. We've got some stuff in digital that with this transition to the electronic permit tracking, we are fully going into the digital age. CJ may be the last planner that has to learn how to fold plans the right way, according to Dave. We'll see what happens. We'd like to keep CJ so and hopefully this will get up and running and, you know, that we won't have to have that anymore. If anybody would like the tutorial, I'm sure Dave would be happy to provide that. So anyhow, I said this move into the digital age. And with that, there's going to be, you know, a forward-facing customer portal. So that the folks that are applying for applications, they're able to do that electronically. They're also able to look within that portal to see exactly what the status is of where it is in the review process. You folks that are familiar with the Pikes Peak Regional Building Department know that those contractors that use that system were able to to do some of those very same things through their program. The other thing we're looking to do with this process is streamline our workflow. There's a lot of stuff that we're currently doing that is pretty labor intensive, hoping to kind of clean some of that up, get rid of some things. That is part of the objective. I've seen other organizations that go to digital and they never lose the analog version of things. So the 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 objective here really is to make a transition and not duplicate work. And with this streamlining, we've already started using Blue Beam, which is a tool for digital plan review, that that will get further integrated into the electronic tracking. And one of the questions we keep asking ourselves as we work on this is what can we automate? So that generation of the letters that goes out to property owners that are in an area that are supposed to receive notice as part of a development application, that the goal is that the the program can get the appropriate information in the notice. You've still got a human behind the scenes folding and putting in the envelope and sending it out. But it hopefully should speed up the the generation of those particular letters. We're looking for this to help us improve our record keeping and then better improve or automate our reporting functions so that we're able to give you the statistics like you were just asking for much more readily without the manual computation that we've been been doing to date. And one of the big switches is with the code compliance and enforcement program. From what I've seen, it's had a variety of methodologies behind it over the years. It's had a variety of tools that the folks in that position have used to keep track of what they're doing. Some of it's been as basic as an Excel spreadsheet. When we had a sworn police officer in that role, they had access to the police system for reporting. I understand that that's actually incredibly cumbersome in terms of the format in which they have to put information into it because it's it's the way that's useful for police officers and not the way that's useful for planners. And then we're also using this as an opportunity to evaluate what it is that we're communicating with our various applicants and when we're doing that. So there's the potential for other process improvements, the things behind the scenes that you guys don't see. When we meet with the applicant, potentially more frequently meeting with the applicant at various phases of a long entitlement process, and just really trying to up our game and make that much easier for them to understand and just just make sure everything that or as much as we can that they need to know is being communicated in in a timely and appropriate way. And so this is our rough timeline in terms of what we've been working on related to permit tracking and where we are. That, you know, right here between August and September, we're in the middle of what's called field mapping. And that's where we really lay out what our processes are, who's involved, what are the steps? So like I said, that's a great opportunity for us to really rethink that. And that's going to segue here in a minute for you. And we're supposed to get that done here in early September. We've already started a little bit of training around the code enforcement module. And our big goal and desire is to go live here at the start of the new year. So we're pretty excited, feel like it's really starting to take take shape at this point. And then through this, we're also identifying, kind of like we are with our code review, other things that potentially need further modification and updating. And so those are things like development agreements, like I just mentioned, what meetings are required and when, what our letters look like in terms of communication or documenting various stages of approval. That potential for are there additional updates required for our ordinances? And then potentially also the engineering specs and standards. So this project with the code review that we've been doing, you may recall from when we first sat down and talked about this, our goals are to reorganize into a single code, three chapters of our regulations, one or it's a chapter 16 that currently deals with mobile homes, specifically mobile home parks, 17 deals with subdivisions, and 18 is our chapter on zoning. We've been really working to restructure this for easier use. So you see a totally different chapter configuration with what we've been working on. And we've been updating very the land use table, and that's one of our items that we're talking about tonight. We've already been through that in terms of looking at the labels as that compared to our definitions. And there were some uses that have been added. I recognize that what we've already done and looked at is not in the version that you guys have looked at in preparation for tonight's meeting. But at least it's a place to start and we're keeping things moving. There's also some additional graphics. I'm sure you've seen as you've looked in the draft that you've been reviewing. And then I added this because it's become clear through our conversations that there are some definite legal tweaks and updates that that need to occur. So that's the the review that we will have our our city attorney be doing once this is a little more polished, just to.
Karen? If you can hear us, we cannot hear you.
Attorney, the attorney polished and it's. Well, that was a short meeting.
All right. Sally, that works.
Evening, Ken.
Good evening, Larry.
Hello, everybody. Oh. She lost her completely. I would jump in where Karen left off, but I'm not sure where she was headed next to that presentation, so.
She dropped off. She's probably rejoining.
Yeah, she'll be back shortly, I'm sure.
Did you have anything to fill in in the meantime?
Um, not really. We we have been sort of chipping away at addressing some of the comments from that we've been making so we can stay on top of them in the background, but other than that, no.
Okay, thank you. I'll cut her some slack because I had this problem in Texas trying to zoom.
She's back on, but she's.
Can you tell Dave, is she connected?
Can she?
I kept leaving the beep on my Wi-Fi.
How convenient. Nothing wants to work.
I know, I was just tapping the AC. And nobody even said it out loud. I don't know, nobody jinxed us.
Got her video coming back.
This has been pretty indicative of my day.
Time for a rest. Welcome back, Karen.
Okay, I was gonna say, can you hear me?
We may have lost the audience. You left having legal review, the more polished version, and then we lost you.
Uh, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so legal review. Identifying future updates. And then I started into where we are. So we got through chapter one in terms of our review. We looked at chapter two. We started into that. We got through the introductory language and then one of the zone districts and got some great feedback from you all. And because of the repetitive nature of that particular chapter, we need to apply that to those other zone districts, just in terms of the formatting and consistency, things that y'all flagged. And we're going to restructure that a little bit to, well, there's a couple of different methodologies behind what happens in that type of a chapter. So we're we're kind of between a couple of those methodologies. So at a staff level, we're going to sort that out. And we'll be getting you an updated chapter two in its entirety restructured for your your further review. But that's not quite ripe to bring back to y'all yet. Chapter three related to the development standards, I think that's where we're going to be headed next for for your review. And one of the things that struck me when I looked at that and then after reviewing applications here for over a year and a half is Woodland Park in a lot of ways is pretty weak on its standards and what we'd like to have our development look like. And under the future project kind of things, there may be the possibility that at some point we're talking about a form-based code. And that's where things are very specific about percentage of a building that's supposed to have windows. This percent needs to be, you know, this particular type of material, and there's like several to pick from. And then the balance of the building could be a different kind of material. So and then, you know, something similar in terms of landscaping where it really provides a lot more guidance to folks in terms of what they're bringing forward to y'all. Chapter four is the one that we're in, and we're pretty much through everything in that particular chapter. And we're down to that use table at this point. So hopefully we will wrap up our initial review of that chapter tonight. And then chapter five, that definitely needs some finessing at this point before it comes back to y'all. And it's chapters five and six that I I think are going to really benefit from the the permit tracking software implementation that we're doing. Because I said, that's really forcing us at a staff level to look at our processes. And that's going to kind of bounce back into what this particular document is looking like to to get some of that cleaned up. And you may recall from my initial presentation to y'all, when we kicked this project off, flagged that our processes are all over the place. There are some things are two weeks and some things are one week. And some things are two-year review or two-year expiration. Some are one, some go to you, some it's it's just all over the place. And there's probably always going to be variability, but we can tighten that up a little bit. So it's a little more predictable. So chapter six is really the roughest out of everything we've got going on right now. And when I first started at Woodland Park and was talking with Jen about this, she very graciously and very kindly in an understated way said, well, your application procedures, they can really use some more work. It's more like, holy crap. It's kind of the level of what it needs at a staff level. I mean, you've got the current copy, and if you were to want to stay up one night and read that, you'd be going, oh, my God, Karen, please don't make us review this. Yes, please, at a staff level, work on this and bring us something reasonable. So that's that's part of what's happening. And then chapter seven, we've already been through in terms of all those definitions and such. And I guess part of the reason I'm showing you all this is to ask for your grace because I realize sometimes it feels like this is not the fastest moving project. And there's definitely some things that need to happen at a staff level behind the scenes. So depending upon where we are in the coming months, there might be a little hiatus for you all on this project. But just know that staff continues to work on it on our end. And so with that, for tonight, what we had asked you to focus on was that table of uses in chapter four. And we narrowed it pretty specifically since we're really looking at, you know, kind of adding and then the, you know, for the new uses that have been identified. And then the decision a while back, several months ago, to get rid of all those PCs permitted conditionally. And you'll note from my email, identified a lot of these that or identified that some of these I really think should be permitted. Like an accessory dwelling, you probably do dwelling unit probably should be just flat out permitted in those own districts because you've got some really specific standards around those kind of things. But cluster development, that particular one, I would think would probably be better suited to a conditional use permit because it's a little more variable, a little more loose. And based on what I've seen from you all, you probably would like a greater degree of oversight if somebody was proposing like something like that. So that's what I had in terms of just some background information in terms of what else has happened in the department. And then to kind of tee things up and segue for Jen to then lead us through that table.
Karen, I had one question for you, though. On your on that timeline, that Gantt chart that you had that you showed all the projects, where did the code review and the, you know, those chapters, I know it wasn't broken out that detail. But I guess basically my question is, when do you anticipate we would be done?
I have no idea with this project. And that Gantt chart pertained actually just to the 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 permit tracking implementation.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't that specific with this particular project, especially since we had kind of a a pretty loose start getting it going. And, you know, we've been really trying to juggle this between the the developer needs. And it's, I mean, if, yeah, it's it's just been a little harder. And then, like I said, we wanted, we're actually in a lot of ways using you all as a technical advisory committee as we we refine this. And it's going to need some review by our city attorney. And then we're definitely going to be, you know, at a certain point, rolling things out for the community for feedback and buy-in and such. And Jen and I haven't completely finessed exactly what that looks like and when. But right now, we definitely need more work before we start doing that.
Karen, do you know the history behind why PCs were in some that we want to change now?
I have no idea how they got there. I think, and this might have been a session you missed, Sean, but I think it might have been a case of, well, yeah, we should allow this in the zone, but go back and look at these other standards that we have in place. And, you know, some of these do have some pretty robust standards to them. And with our where we're going now, it the chart's going to be further revised where it more well, like this does here, you know, it's, you can't see, I'm pointing to Jen's screen. But the first one, accessory dwelling unit refers to the sections where those additional standards are located. So that kind of queue is going to stay in there so that there's use standards for these. But, yeah, I don't think it needs to say permitted conditionally because we've got other things that are flat out permitted or even a conditional use permit where standards apply. So that's, that's my suspicion as to how do we got to where we are. But if you recall, we had a conversation at one point about how to define permitted conditionally. And we all failed at that miserably. So this is actually a much more clear, I think, direction forward for everyone in the use of this code. Anything you want to add, Jen?
Do you remember why?
No, I think that was great.
No, I don't. Well, I I think, you know, I I don't know if it was actually codified, to be true. I I think it was just something that we have standards for this particular use. How do we designate that? And that's where the PC came from. And it it changed in the code somehow, some way. It had to be through an ordinance, I would think. But I cannot recall any discussion about that in the planning commission level or even the public level. So question for Sally.
She retired. I think she's trying to forget.
You still there, Karen?
Karen's there.
She's she's there. She's just very faint.
Oh, okay.
She said she retired. She's trying to forget.
Okay. I'd like to go cut back to before we start getting into the table, which I think we're getting ready to do. On your memo that you wrote to us with the agenda, there was a information you provided that I'd like to ask you to think about reconsidering. And that is that you you say that the the intent and the purpose of the zoning districts should not be changed at this time. Well, by reading some of those things, I think the intent and purpose section has got us in the trouble in the past trying to apply certain uses. And I'm thinking what comes to mind directly is is the Tamarack Village mini home project, in which a lot of the neighbors cited the the intent provision. So I think we need to really be honing into exactly what we're trying to accomplish with each of those own districts. And so I'm just going to ask you, we we take a look at that as well through this process.
Those are in chapter two, and thank you for bringing that up. And we can, we can certainly do that when we go back into to the that particular chapter. And I, there's a few places in this table where there's things that have been added that in the districts in terms of where some of the stuff is allowed, I I think also undermines the intent of some of the the zone districts. So there's, there's a couple of little glitches in a few directions. But for the the sake of narrowing our focus tonight, really wanted to look at those PCs and then the newer uses. And then Valerie has her hand up, so we should probably ask her to to comment.
Well, I I just had a vague recollection and I can't quote a timeframe. But I thought there was an ordinance on the ADUs a couple of years ago where that stuff came from, Karen. But that's just, it's a weird thing in my memory. I I can't tell you where to find it.
Yeah, we can, I guess we can try and find that original ADU ordinance and see what it's. yeah, we can, uh, I guess we can try and find that original ADU ordinance and see what it says. Um, but that would have been when the, the PC showed up in the table for that particular use, but how if that was the first time PC showed up or if it was there historically, that we don't know. Uh, off the top of our heads.
Well, I, I think actually the first time I read this thing and it was before the ADUs, there were PCs. So I think it's old.
So it probably predates all that then.
Yeah, Karen, the council had a whole and planning had a whole deal on ADUs to make that code, so I'm not sure why it's still permitted conditionally because it should just be permitted. Because it's a pretty intensive code and I want to say two thousand eighteen was when they did it.
So moved.
All right, so we took care of the first line based on that direction. You got that, Jen? But so that is just permitted in, in these zone districts, right?
Did you hear Dave?
No, I did not.
Dave said the ordinance is two thousand fourteen.
And that's when the PCs were introduced for all the uses?
That's when ADUs were introduced into the code.
I'd be curious when that came in, like.
So the, the thought on the table is PCs converted to P across the board.
No, not necessarily. That was the question. Wasn't assumed it's across the board changed.
So get moving.
Yeah, no, my, my recommendation and, and like you guys just came to this conclusion for accessory dwelling units. Um, that should be, uh, permitted in those own districts. Um, the next one, a clustered residential development, that's one of those that I think, um, you all would probably prefer to have an extra level of oversight with. Um, and my recommendation on that one would, that it should be a conditional use permit.
I'd like to go back to accessory dwelling unit. And I'm thinking that we have service commercial surrounded by community commercial and CBD C. That should also be a C, a P too.
Okay, so this is one of those places where I personally think we undermine the intent of those zone districts. Because when, um, you think about what are the, they're all commercial. So you shouldn't have a residential use in a commercial zone unless it like predates things. And then that accessory dwelling unit is accessory to an established house. Um, so that's my two cents worth on that, so, um.
I, I was going to say, why did you have to have them all, the P or over there at all? Uh, because it is commercial. I don't, I don't know why you want to do that. You want to ADU on a gas station property? I don't know, I'd.
Well, no, it'd have to be accessory. There'd have to be a house there. Um, and then the it's further down in the use table, um, where it, uh, states through the, with the residential zones that if there's that you can place a single family home or a duplex on an existing platted lot in certain commercial zones, um, which
When not service, yeah, not as soon.
Which just I, I find interesting and, and, um, we definitely have seen a number of those things where, um, they've, they've come in and gone through what we currently have set up as a, a change in use process and, um, you know, we've processed probably a half a dozen of them since I've been here and yeah, they're small commercial lots and somebody else will argue you really can't do anything with it. Um, but it's, it's still undermining the integrity of the commercial zone. Uh, so the question is, is it the correct zoning? Um, there's probably a variety of things in play for every single parcel that if we were to look at them individually. So.
So my two cents would be central business district would stay because it, in, you know, it involves behind the park and, and whatnot, but does it really need to be in community commercial? I mean, neighborhood commercial maybe, but community commercial, maybe it's not allowed. That would just be my two, my two cents.
And if you do, and does that mean in CBD it would be a C? I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So the, the thought, the thought, if I can summarize it is P with the SR, P with the UR, and then you want to go C with NC? C with CC? No? Oh, take it out, take it out, blank, blank for SC as well.
Well, and because we don't know the unintended consequences of this, um, my thought is do not add service commercial. Um, and then because we have such strong standards for accessory dwelling units, um, just change NC, CC and the CBD zones so that those are also permitted.
Because of the standards. No, she's saying, well, Karen's suggesting they're Ps for NCCC and CBD. And remove, yeah, remove SC.
Okay. Yeah, because one thing has disappeared to see. It's either P or not allowed are the two suggestions I just heard. We're fairly, or C, or C, I guess.
Yeah, but, um, I, for this particular item, an accessory. Yeah, for an accessory dwelling unit though, be, I, I'm comfortable, um, not requiring a conditional use permit. First of all, it's accessory to an established use. And then second of all, there's, there's very strong standards to, to them in terms of when and where they can be permitted. Um, so this one, like I said, I think they, they need to, this line, they should, where there's currently a designation that PC needs to just change to a P.
I agree with that.
So before we go much further, I do want to get some clarification on exactly what we're doing because a minor standing permitted use does not come to the planning commission for review nor does it go to the city council for approval. It's just permitted. And somebody applies and it goes to the planning department and they approve it. A conditional use comes to the planning commission for review if it's zoning related. And it has to go get approval by the city council for a conditional use permit. If it says conditional. Now permitted conditionally, what did that do previously? Or how it went through the process?
It was treated like a P, but the C meant check that there's, there's other stuff you may have to do.
It came to the planning commission?
No. No.
No, because on the clusters it was PC and we have a whole, I don't remember, I have a whole.
Which one was it?
On the next line, on the cross development.
So that's what I was wondering is if we differentiated and came up with a process.
So back, so back in like two thousand eighteen on the cluster development, which was PC, we came before you guys, but it doesn't go before council. That's, so PC count goes between planning, the planning department and the planning commission and you guys decide yes or no, and it never goes before council. That was my understanding and that's how I remember it.
That makes sense.
Cluster did come to, come to this.
Came to you guys, yeah.
So we have a final say.
You had the final say, yeah. That's the way I remember it.
So a PC did not result in a conditional use permit?
It went, it was permitted conditionally, so it had to go through the standards, you guys had to go through you guys or through the planning commission and then you were the, you were the deciding body.
We need to look at like whatever, we need to look at whatever language.
But that's why we're, but that's.
If any, that says, that's.
That's why we're discussing this tonight, right? Because it was so convoluted.
I couldn't find anything that said what PC did. If, if you look at all the areas, it says permitted uses, blah, 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 then it says conditional uses can be approved by the city council. That's it. It doesn't say anything about permitted conditionally or what the process is, so that's why.
Excuse me, Ken, that is the point in terms of where I started with all this.
That's why, that's.
Exactly.
Several sessions ago, excuse me. Excuse me, several sessions ago, we had talked about this and you guys had said, staff, you just figured this out one way or the other. And I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with that, so that's why we brought this back to you all this evening. Um, we made the decision to get rid of PCs, so they either need to go to Ps, Cs or not allowed. Um, but more than likely, they need to go to a P or a C, so that's, that's where we are. So I'm sorry, Ken, your turn.
Only thing is, is that we are adding the, go to the city council and get a conditional use permit if we make it a C. That's just, that's, I just want to make that clear to everybody. So all the new guys and everybody understands that that's the process.
Yep, thank you.
And, and what that gives you is the citizens have a say, right? Because permitted, just permitted, it goes through planning. And unless they make a mistake, what the citizens think, then it's done.
Well, keep in mind too, any decision that's made administratively is appealable. So there is still an avenue for the citizens to say, that was a wrong decision. I think we ought to appeal that. We currently, the code says appeals go to the board of adjustment.
The other thing I would like to add.
It's not the main path we want to have for very, very often. That would be extraordinary, extraordinary situation.
Yes.
The other thing I would like to add is the regulations themselves are adopted through a public hearing process. So the community has input through that process also for how these rules are established.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for hearing me out.
And, and keep in mind that the, we're still dealing with clustered right now. The clustered is only allowed in the SR and UR zone districts. They, they weren't taken out of the other zone districts. That is correct, isn't it?
They were never in the other zone districts.
That's right. So if we change that to a conditional use clustered, that means it'll go, instead of stopping at the planning commission, it would go on to the city council.
Right. That's, that's, that's the right answer for a cluster development.
Yes, I think so too.
So again, then the recommendation is to convert SR and UR to C.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yep.
Read it again.
Oh, Jen just highlighted the one that I was talking about before where you've got one or two dwelling lots um, per existing platted lot, um, in those particular zone districts, you know, where you could establish a single family home or a duplex on an existing platted lot in these particular, these commercial zone districts.
Karen, what's your recommendation on that one?
I'm not crazy about it in general from, you know, whether it's, um, permitted or, uh, conditional use permit. Um, and, um, maybe that's one that, um, we just highlight for now. And after we're clear about the intent of those zone districts, that may become more clear to you all at that point also in terms of what should happen. Um, and we probably, um, probably would benefit from if we could find, um, the, the ordinance that set that into place. Um, to, to see what kind of history there might have been, uh, around that particular item.
Are you talking about this?
Dwelling.
Dwelling, single family attached duplex, dwelling, single family attached townhome, those that are Cs, that are Cs and the MFS and MFU.
No, um, down further where Jen just highlighted, um.
Dwelling, commercial, one or two dwelling units.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Here's an idea. So we're going to have more discussion on that one that you just highlighted?
That was our, that was our thought, Larry. Um, if you got something to add now, that'd be great.
Yeah, no.
I think she was thinking after we looked through some of the things, it's something we can come back to and make a better decision.
Well, keep in mind too, that this use table, we added several uses, we changed the uses, we changed the definitions, we changed the standards. So we're going to have to go back with, with those things in mind as well.
Right.
Yes, a couple times. So this is the first blush at the use table and it won't be the last.
Yeah, that's, that's my anticipation, um. I'd like to think we can get it done in two passes, but, um, yeah.
My, my notes show that when we went through the definitions on dwelling or residence comma, commercial, we had a question mark about it and there's going to be head some, needed to be looked at further.
Yeah. So and for this particular one, um, this goes back to Larry's comments earlier about, um, revisiting the intent of the various zone districts. So I think when we've got that piece uh, of information, uh, plus flushed out a little bit, then this, this will become more clear at that point in time. So my recommendation is to, to move on a little bit here.
I got some more comments on.
What were you going to say, Valerie? I think you got.
The elephant in the room, the last thing in that group. You change pages. That dwelling manufactured on a permanent foundation. That was never, that never had Ps on SR, UR, that's a new thing. I don't see why we'd want to do that. That's.
That's one of those Colorado law things, um, thanks to the, um, I think it's the, the, the manufactured housing association and the lobbying that they did back in the early two thousands. A law is on the books in Colorado where i- and this is one of the definitions, we need to, um, come back to you all with a, a, a clear legally compliant definition. So if that manufactured home is, meets some criteria, um, and your community can set some of that criteria and plus it out a little, I believe, I got to check with legal on this. But, um, plus it out a little bit, but in the definition from statute, it's at least of twenty-four feet by thirty-six feet. So that gets you into a double wide, permanent perimeter foundation, pitched roof and, uh, cosmetically equivalent siding, so equivalent to what else is going on in the neighborhood. Uh, we have to treat them like a site built home. Under the law.
Right, but I, I think it needs it. There, yes, there's things that you can do, but there's nothing that says you, it doesn't have to be automatically permitted, can be conditional. Why? I, yeah, I.
I would, we need to check the law. That's a legal question and I believe we have to permit them anywhere we would permit.
Uh, yeah, I, I would check the, the Pike Peak regional rules too, because those are the ones that really govern this one. I mean, they, that's the one that govern it when that'll happen for, no, that, not that one, just that other one. And the other, the other question was I, I thought earlier, when we were discussing the other, there wasn't the, the quote unquote mobile home park, how do I say this? Under a mobile home park, that, that whole definition, it's what, it's like, okay, that's left, it's over from sixteen, mobile home park and that designation was not a unit that was attached to a permanent foundation. I don't, in the mobile home park, uh, you, there's issues in there, I think need to get reviewed.
Correct. Yep, yeah, no, good. Correct.
I, I think to help you Valerie a little bit is that in the future there will be no mobile homes created. They will be manufactured home parks. And that the mobile homes will only continue to exist if they exist today in existing mobile homes, parks.
Correct. Well, that's what I thought, where I thought we were, wasn't sure why, why the, an automatic permitted thing on, on something new that's added, that's all.
Yeah, so we got it, we got to be careful. Again, that's a good example of working with intents. You know, the intent is that this does not apply to existing mobile home parks or so on and so forth.
Because we don't want them to stop and have to change everything.
No, 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 I think we need to do whatever we can to legitimize existing mobile. Yeah, I think we need to do whatever we can to legitimize existing mobile homes and mobile home parks.
So my two cents? I don't have a problem with the permitted on a permanent foundation. I mean, they build nice, some pretty nice manufactured 2,500 square foot homes. And then if you go to the next one, it's dwelling manufactured, not on a permanent foundation. And the only place it's allowed permitted is in a mobile home park.
Right.
So I don't personally have a problem with, with either.
I, 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 I understand what you're saying. My, my reaction to it from a reason I was, I, if we have to get permitted, we can do permit, I mean, obviously you do whatever you have to legally. The conditional thing, I think that quite frankly, in some of the neighborhoods, if somebody came in and did that in a neighborhood right now that's existing, they wouldn't be happy people and you have a, you'd have a whole bunch of people in the town that weren't happy. I, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but there's.
Great ones in the Springs that are real, you know, real places.
Right, right, but there's, there's standards, there's standards involved on a manufactured home in an SR. It has to be a certain square footage. It can't be 500 square feet. Same with, same with UR. I mean, so you can't put a tiny home on an SR lot. So I, I still think the permitted is, is a reasonable assumption, because you gotta still hit the standards that go with SR.
That's, yeah, that's good. What, I don't, why would we, we wouldn't want to have that permitted on a mobile home, in a mobile home park though?
And it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
No, it, it is, right? That's what they want to add.
No, no.
The next.
And I mean, yes, it's, it's permitted on a permanent foundation. And it's, it's permitted on a permanent, permanent foundation in a mobile home park if they want it to be. But if you go to a mobile home park, not on a permanent foundation, it's not allowed except for mobile home park.
Right.
Okay.
And, and again, the definition for a manufactured home talks about these, these things. If I had to eliminate.
I, I have, trust me, guys, I got pages and pages, the definitions of that stuff. So it's, it, no, I, I just was thinking it might be worth really reviewing it, not tonight.
Can we scroll up again? To where, let's see, dwelling, single family, detached. And then right below that is dwelling, single-family attached duplex. I'm just going to throw something out that's going to.
Uh-oh.
I want to, ha- at least have it considered that in the S U, SR and the UR, we allow duplexes as a permitted use. Could be conditional, but to allow them within those two single-family districts. We hear so much anymore about affordable housing. And one of the things that went through the legislature in the last session was an overhaul to encourage other than single-family homes. And I think that would be a good way to start saying, okay, w- we're aware of the issue of, of affordable housing. We think it's important and we, we, we think they ought to be in the same category or as a single family in the districts. And that can be done as a conditional too. It doesn't have to be a permitted use.
I think that's a good way to increase the difficulty by ex- exponentially try and do this. I think that's different from the character of the revision we're trying to do here. It's largely to restate, clarify, simplify and make ease of use. That's, that's getting, that's a hot button issue you're talking about along duplexes and the SR zones. It's something, something like that in the, in the develop, in this, we're trying to just recodify what's here. The kind of thing that will sort of blow up the whole discussion. I mean, it's, it's the wrong, bring it up if you'd like. I think this is the wrong place to bring it up.
Okay, well.
It's, it's too big an issue to come up with something that new and just sort of stick it in here. Or we'll let you know at the time so you can be aware of it. That's my sense of that kind of a change.
I wanted to bring it up now, just got, there's just the plant and seed. I, I agree with you, Lee. Let's leave that alone. Let's don't do that right now. It, it goes beyond the scope of what I'm trying to do. I agree. Okay? In, in that same vein, when we look at the, uh, the multifamily, right below that, I know that again, again, the Tamrec Tiny Home Project presented a, a whole long series of conditional permitted so forth. But for, for, I really have a major problem thinking that in a man, uh, in a multifamily zone district, we don't try to encourage multifamily. And, and right now there's own conditional. And I'm thinking that those, some of those things should be changed to permitted. But again, it's probably way too controversial following.
This, this, these, these Cs came from city council action within the last two to three years.
These came straight from the village of Tamrec.
Yeah, but, but it was city council actually specifically on this subject, an issue of great concern. Not, not the kind of thing that we should be sliding into the code revision.
Well, and, and it's not that, it's not saying that council wouldn't approve it. It's just that it's got to go through the conditional use and it'll likely get approved. It's just, they wanted to be able to allow the citizens to have a say, because the citizens felt like they didn't have a say prior to it.
I don't have a problem at all allowing multifamily as a, as a permitted use.
None of us, none of us do, but we had, but the village of Tamarack found the loophole.
And, and keeping single families in multifamily condition.
Right.
Yeah, that's enough.
We're going to take your spoon so you can't stir the pot.
We're trying to get to the living lodging section.
Oh, I got one. Why is bed and breakfast a per- permitted conditionally in SC and CBD?
As opposed to.
As opposed to just conditional or permitted? I mean, to me, it just seems they should either be condition, they should either all be conditional or they should all be permitted.
This, they brought up before, it's, you see the, the use description of this?
Yeah.
Bed and breakfast.
They have to serve you breakfast.
Very heavily, but if it's a hotel or a motel, it's, it just has to be a hotel or a motel. It's, there's basically no rules. Um, so, so you, I mean, this could easily be avoided if someone built something, it might, you might have called it bed and breakfast, I'd say, no, 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 so it's a hotel. But emphasizing the point, you're, you're right. It's, it's inconsistent. It doesn't make, we want to get rid of PC anyways. Right. If hotels and motels are permitted, bed and breakfast ought to be permitted as well.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think maybe we, we, as we review this, we ought to keep in mind that permitted encourages that use in that zoning district.
Right.
Or conditional goes through a public hearing process. And that's kind of the, the process to be able to make a check and balance, make sure that the impacts are addressed for that particular use in that district. But at the same time, um, yeah. Well, well, as we do this, let's, let's try to think, do we want to encourage single-family homes in a single-family zone district? The answer should be yes. And it should be permitted. And then maybe in, in, for instance, this example of issues, maybe it shouldn't be encouraged, but it goes through this process to check those, those things. But again, we're not going to go there with major overhauls.
This also brings up the first place for the column, PUD is used. That is, I guess, off the table. Is that going to just disappear, the column?
What? What I, what I would like to do with that is, um, in that entire column, probably put an asterix or some other denotion, note in there or identifier to go back to a, a note, um, that says, um, with, with planned unit developments, the uses are established at the time the zoning district, or, or the uses are identified at the time the zoning district is established. Cause that's when that happens with that. You know, when somebody comes into you, uh, requesting a PUD, they, they've got a list of what they want to do there. And, um, as you saw recently with the Walmart PUD, somebody wanted to change one of the allowed uses, um, that, um, you know, they, they needed to come back as part of revising that PUD, um, in terms of should this, this potentially be allowed there? Um, probably not the greatest example. I need to be cautious, because while it's out of planning commission, it is still in the hands of city council and that particular hearing item is open, so please do not discuss that item. Sorry Catherine. So, but, um, that's, that's my take on what, what should happen with a PUD is just the notation that uses are, um, identified at the time the zoning district is established.
That's a big 10-4. So we got some Ps listed under commercial dwellings.
Yeah, we're, that, that's Karen recommended that we look at the ordinance and.
Oh, okay.
Table that one for now.
Okay, that's right.
Dwelling commercials.
Should do, oh, yeah.
So it looks like it's not till you get down to agriculture where you get your next set of PCs.
Yeah.
In the SR and UR. Stable, commercial stable.
Well, and why is a PC under Ag? Shouldn't it just be permitted, I mean, permitted under Ag for sure, for sure.
Yeah, permitted in Ag makes sense, but I don't understand why you want a commercial stable in a SR or UR, but I don't.
Well, I mean, there, there are some homes off of 67 that do have stables.
Yeah, but aren't those private and not commercial?
Well, well, there's, well, there's both. I mean, there's private, private's PC and commercials PC, so.
I mean, I, I'm kind of agreeing.
Yeah.
Why would you want a commercial stable?
In a pri- yeah.
Right.
I, I get the private stable thing. I don't understand why the commercial one, that's all.
So I heard a comment and I agree with that, that the commercial stable should not be allowed in single-family districts.
Right. That, that's my feeling. Then the private should be conditional in both.
Yes.
Can you repeat that? I was looking up the definitions of urban and suburban just to see what we, what they were at. Con- conditional where?
Uh, conditional and private and non-existent and for the commercial.
Okay.
And then the Ag goes permanent.
Right, or permitted, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So did we take?
My guess is, is the reason it was conditional was because there are some odors that come from those and you need to know how it affects the neighbors. That putting it in an Ag zone, maybe it's next door to a residential owner. I know, there, it's not much chance that it's going to be an issue, but then, then.
Yeah.
Alright.
The next, next PC, oh. You're just right up there.
That chops.
See Jen from Orange. You might need to use the scroll bar on the right to go up and down as opposed to like clicking the arrow. It may be a little smoother, because right now it's like really jerky up and down.
It's still, still jerky. Yeah, let's try that.
Yeah, that's smoother.
Yeah. I think your next PC is our fun district.
Oops, you missed one. Go back up.
I did.
Animal Services.
Yeah, um, yeah, golf and baseball driving range, I think, is where we hit them in the, the public semi-public lands.
But, but you had PCs in animal services.
We did, then under pet shop and grooming and veterinarian.
Yeah.
Keep, keep, keep on going up. Up, up.
There you go.
It's all, it's all over the PUD though.
Oh, no, it's just, what you have here, you, you already changed from what is in the book that we have.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, daylight and dark short.
Okay. And at the risk of. I'll pass it up again, there, because they're way over here. So the golf course, or I'm going to find the real term for this one. I have definitions open.
So did, Jen, did you change adult-oriented businesses to conditional under entertainment and recreation? Cause I still have that in my book as PC.
Yeah. Yeah. PC, PC, there must have been some, some legal input to give, put the P in front of it, put the P in there.
As opposed to a C? Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't intentionally change that, I'll tell you that. So let me.
Yeah, I think it's a C if, if, if it's permitted, unless it's required to be something, a P with, with a lot of, with the appropriate conditions attached to it.
Well, then it takes another full review of our adult oriented businesses. See what kind of standards are already in place.
Those that are actually fairly robust, um, in terms of, of everything associated with them. Yeah. But they're always, they're always definitely controversial, um, in terms of trying to cite them, that's for sure.
Is, is there a legal problem with making those two Cs? Cause I, I would think that, that the population might want to speak up.
That one I'm not as sure about, uh, Valerie, but I made a note about it. Um, and maybe put that after that, um, Jen. Um, you know, for the adult-oriented businesses, uh, check with legal, can these require a conditional use permit?
Yeah, I, I believe they can. It's just a matter of allowing them in some fashion, um, within roughly 30% of your area, so, uh, but I'll make a note, we can double check that. With the rule. I'm still trying to. You guys are going to laugh at me. Your existing code is so hard to navigate. I'm trying to find this on your existing use table, just to see what we, what it says.
Trying to find what?
The adult-oriented businesses, which I believe we called sexually-oriented businesses, but it's not in alphabetical order.
The one that we got, they were PCs.
No, but.
The first.
Oh. Well, we have not, that's weird. Um, it is actually shown in your current code as P. There, that's what I wanted to confirm. So this, this is what's in your current code.
Yeah, that's not what you helped send us and I don't want to say.
I think it warrants further review by staff.
Yep, I think it warrants legal review.
Yeah, that's how we got it flagged.
Yep.
Alright, the next PC we have.
Right there.
Oh.
Golf.
Thank you, yep.
There's that baseball driving range again, same thing.
That's all driving ranges, yeah.
Okay, golf driving range and batting cages, that's what we, that's what we renamed it to.
Yeah.
Is there conditional in NC and CC? These are actually very large land, tend to be large uses. I would think they tend to be C before you take that much space up for a drive.
Very, yeah. Conditional.
Yeah.
Conditional across the board? Okay.
Conditional.
Conditional again? And that is in your public public category. So I don't know if, if that has any, any bearing on that decision.
So, so does that mean it's, it's right now it's in two places? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the, these PCs that we're looking at right here are in this public semi-public zone district.
Oh.
Which a public or semi-public zone district typically is identified. You know, for those more public or government type uses. So a golf course. I, I just, I don't know if it needs to be a P R C. I just wanted to point that out. If it was in a commercial district or something, I would say definitely C, but in your public zone district. You may be okay permitting them. As long as they meet certain standards.
The land ownership in that, uh, P S P L zone is typically the city of Woodland Park. Um, inside city limits. So, um, an example of that is like Meadowwood Sports Complex. City Hall has also zoned that.
If Meadowbrook wants to put a golf something. City approves, you don't need to have the city council hazard for conditional use. It's the city can decide or not decide.
Uh, batting cages would be a great example of something that might be desirable over in Meadowwood.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it already exists, but I mean, clearly the golf course that's there is privately owned and it's got a protected wild, wildlife, whatever thing in it. We don't have to make sure something's in there for that, do we? Cause it already exists.
I believe that's actually zoned a P U D so that use would, would have been established with the zoning district.
Okay. I also want to point out, I know we were just talking about conditional across the board for our golf driving range and batting cages. Um, but this, this C that's in blue means that that was a proposal by previous staff. Um, it currently in your code is permitted in the public semi-public. And it's not listed. Golf courses are not listed at all in your public semi-public. So I, I'm just going to throw out, I think I might recommend you allow them as a permitted use, both golf courses and the driving ranges as a permitted use in public semi-public, but I would support the commercial over or conditional over in your commercial zone.
Would some public lands bump up against residential? And batting cages can be allowed.
I'd say we call all, all those.
I would just make it conditional.
Yep.
Conditional.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I would think the city would be the applicant, right Karen? Not a lot of those, or would it be a private applicant on city owned land?
And this time I would say more than likely the city, but there's other municipalities that have done, um, other creative franchise agreements with, um, private providers. So, um, who knows where the world's going next?
Okay. Okay, we'll do conditional for both of those. Um, then we're down to indoor recreation. Uh, it does show, again, I, I believe this is a, it's actually permitted in your public zone district now. Uh, we had proposed to change it to PC. Our previous staff had chosen to change it to PC, but, um. So that's up to you guys. If you want to keep the P or change it to a C.
See.
I was just gonna say, I like C just to be kind of uniform. Hello.
And the, and the one that's in S C that you changed to a P, again, the book we originally got had, had to be a P. I mean, it's, I've been a PC, so you changed that one to a P.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The book I have, how's that? The first one says it was PC.
Cause you're perplexing me about, cause this is the, I thought this was the exact document that we sent you guys. Well, I don't know. Some, some grandmas got in there and gave you some PCs. But, but this is per your current code. We, we have verified that these are pre-referred codes. So some, maybe, maybe something happened there.
Oh, that's fine. I just, yeah.
Yeah.
To be fair, Jen, like my book has, um, March fourteenth of twenty twenty-two.
That's what I have to do.
So that might be what we're working off of that it's different than what you have currently.
Yeah, it's. Let's just keep moving forward. I'll just keep verifying what was, what's in your current code. Cause I, I feel like there might be missed some mistakes in the table in the one you guys are reviewing from twenty twenty-two, but I don't know why.
Right, probably.
That's a good point, Shane, because I've, I've, I'm just looking at this, that, that's not fitting when I'm looking at, we're not on the same page.
Well, I, I kept looking down and I'm like, okay.
You know what? I just realized. So this is the Excel file that was supposed to be rolled into that draft. I have a feeling I want to know what happened. This is the Excel's file that we were working in with staff. We rolled it into the draft that you guys are reviewing and I bet some edits happened in the draft that didn't get reflected back to that working Excel file. So I bet that's exactly the change and I, um, but this is what in your current code and this, the blue is anything that was proposed by, um, let's see, proposed change by consultant and, and staff, and then from the red was from planning commission notes from, I guess, a planning commission meeting that you all had during the, the discussion process on this probably about two years ago. So. Anyway. I think that's the mystery right there.
Yeah. So she's got it up on the, on, oops, sorry, on the board there, but the, so the intent right now for the golf or baseball driving range, um, is you have Cs across the board, right? Is that what your note says, Jen?
Yep.
Yep. And then golf course and clubhouse is conditional in it, in the public. Recreational entertainment is conditional, although there is a so that, that's the service commercial, we want to change that to conditional as well. From a, because it's a P right now. So basically change the, all those permitted to any of the, the two permitted, permitted conditional, the two conditional. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's what we said.
It looks like you all, well, maybe not this whole group, but planning commission in general had proposed to change recreational entertainment outdoor in the CC zone to a P at one time. I'm trying to find that in your current use table. Cause I believe it's a C.
I would, why would we want recreational entertainment outdoor permitted in all of the residential zones? Am I missing something?
Putting miniature golf as part of this will update definition.
These actually mirror what we just did with the indoor.
Well, but they're not allowed in the indoor. I mean, under SRU or M F S, M F U and M.
I know. It can't be right.
That can't be right. Yeah.
They are currently permitted in all your residential zones for your current.
Do we have a category called recreational entertainment outdoor?
So yeah, we do. And we changed that definition, I believe.
Tennis courts.
The parks or tennis courts. I mean, I can see where it could come from.
Yeah.
Oh, miniature golf, but I don't.
I certainly don't want to talk.
I'm going to read off the definition that we came up with. Um, outdoor commercial facility designed and equipped for the conduct of sports and leisure time activities, including recreation grounds, tennis courts, miniature golf courses and similar recreation activities. So it is, it's very active recreation activities. I'm wondering if the reason that it was permitted originally was because of tennis courts in residential areas, but that that would seem very nuanced.
Sounds like it's something, if it's allowed at all, it's C everywhere too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of people are, could be very happy right up against their back backyard, somebody with a tennis court, the bank. Even the tennis court.
Yeah.
Is something would be a C, should be a C.
I agree. So do you want to change all of these to Cs?
People have private tennis. If you've got a big lot, you want to put a tennis court on, as long as you can convince the neighbors that it's screened well and they can get it, get it through.
Right.
So is that, so then is, do they all be Cs?
Cs, yep.
Okay.
And somehow, as Jen was pointing out, there's a red P in there, which means somewhere along the line, planning wanted to manage.
I don't think they ought to be allowed in res- in those residential districts at all. And then we, we look at tennis courses being accessory, being certain conditions in residential districts.
But, but it is possible that somebody might want to put one in their backyard.
Well, that's fine, but let's call it an accessory use, not, not a permitted use.
Yeah, but accessory use is not going to work if you've got, if you've got an express category name for the same thing where it's not permitted.
Somebody wanted to develop something and they're going to put a courtyard in and they want a clubhouse and pool and.
Then they need to be in a commercial district, not a residential. Yep.
My experience has been that, um, tennis courts show in a municipal setting, they show up as an amenity within a park. Um, rather than, you know, a, a designated commercial enterprise. Um, so that's maybe why it was showing up as permitted as it was seen as, as part of a, a, a park facility in a neighborhood. Um, sometimes they've got swing sets. Sometimes they got jungle gyms. Uh, once upon a time they used to have shuffle bar, shuffle, um, not shuffle. I'm trying to think of, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. Shuffleboard, yeah, old shuffleboard courts, you know, but yeah. Yeah. So, um, that, those types of facilities have evolved over the years. Um, I'm sure there's a contingent in Woodland Park that would love to see, uh, pickleball, you know, and, um, that's one of the things. Kind of like a basketball court that, um, they can be quite noisy. Um, and if you're not in love with that and not wanting to hear it, you know, at least twelve hours a day, probably not the house for you.
Well, but, but just like if, if we do the change to all conditional, I mean, then at least somebody has a chance to bitch.
Even if it's permitted, it doesn't stop, um, we, uh, we field those calls regularly on all kinds of things.
I think the intention of this is more of a commercial. I don't want to call it a commercial facility, but it's not your, just your backyard tennis court. I don't know.
Well, we have to make, we have to make a distinction between a commercial and a residential.
Right. And I would say you either go conditional on these or not permitted at all. Cause to Karen's point, a lot of these would be tied to a park. I'm, I'm just trying to think through scenarios that would require something like this in a residential zone district.
I'm not sure the definitions of recreation areas, indoor, outdoor are clear enough to say that um, whether or not jungle gym or swing set in the backyard for your kids is outdoor recreation, which I, I, I trust.
Everything else in that category is some kind of a commercial endeavor.
And you wouldn't, you wouldn't go get a permit.
Entertainment and recreation. And in the old, it was called amusement and recreation services. So, I mean, I think the intent was all these were somebody wanting to build a outdoor recreation item, whatever those.
It's a recreation facility or activity provided as an accessory used to residential community or neighborhood, either for public or private good. A little odd wording, i.e. tennis courts, swimming pool, recreation center, skate parks, et cetera.
And we had, we had updated that definition slightly when we worked on it, um, previously with you all. And it does have outdoor commercial facility. So it does very clearly state that it's a commercial facility. So I think that helps.
Yeah. So I think taking them out of the residential is fine.
Well, and if you go to it's, well, Karen, I think it was Karen or Jen saying that they're done by maybe in the parks or whatever, that would be under the public semi-private land and it's permitted there. So that covers that.
The multifamily areas, we'd probably need to leave it as conditional for sure.
Yes, take it out of SR U R and leave it in M F S and M F U, you think?
I don't know how they would be separately commercial from the development anyway, but it, yeah, it could be argued.
I hadn't thought about it. It makes sense in the multifamily, what it has a conditional use. Cause they might have a clubhouse or something. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think we're, I think we're saying.
Spirit of what we're trying to do.
Yep. You got it. You got it, Jen. Remove from SR and UR, conditional. Yeah, there you go.
What about that mobile home park? I, I'm saying remove, but.
Yeah.
Additional.
Additional and, and mobile home?
Why?
Well, a mobile home park could have a clubhouse.
Right.
Right.
Can I clarify? We, do we come out that it's blank for SR and UR, C for MF, MFU and M H P? And then the other ones stay as they are written.
Yep. Correct.
All right. You guys ready to move on?
Definitely.
Um, our next PCs are in childcare home.
Yeah.
P is because they're, because they're permitted by state law, subject to.
I think they shall be Ps, right Karen?
Um, yes, and they potentially are relative to that updated ordinance I sent you after our last session. So, um, that was, that was updated consistent with state law. Um, I want to say it was January, February of twenty twenty-two. Um, so it was pretty well thought out and vetted at that point. We just need to make sure that gets applied into this table.
Right.
So they're all permitted in all districts.
In the residential.
All right, I'm giggling. My dog is making strange noises behind me. I hope you guys can't hear them.
I don't think they're permitted in the heavy service commercial. I don't really think you want family care in, next to a cement factory, but I could be wrong.
I think this is one of those where the state made the decisions for us.
But not in the heavy?
I, well, I, I don't, I'm looking for the, the ordinance right now. It was ordinance number fourteen sixteen in twenty twenty-two.
Oh, this is another one of those ones that split. That's why I'm confused.
Why are we all the way down the repair? You know, and retail. Or, or are we still there in, uh, oh, I never, nevermind. I was wrong. Nevermind.
Yeah, actually Karen, you're right. Your current, your current code has Ps across the board minus H S C L I.
Yeah, that is permitted everywhere. That was, um, like I said, one of those decisions that the state made for us.
Hey, but, but CBD and heavy ser- and H S C are different. Former C and the latter not allowed. Is that where we came out when we reviewed this before?
No, Jen had it right just now that, um, and it's actually a fa- family childcare home is the, the state term. So that's one of those, I think the last time we talked about these that we wanted to make sure we, we had that up to date. And per the state, um, it is permitted, um, in every one of these zone districts. Uh, the exception is the, the heavy service, commercial, light industrial zone district where that is prohibited, but it's, it is flat out permitted in all of the other zone districts.
So CBD should be changed from C to P. It wasn't a PC before. It was different.
This, the ordinance that you guys approved and city council adopted in twenty twenty-two, it is a permitted use in every single district. It is a permitted use in every single district with the exception of the heavy service, commercial, light industrial zone. And in that particular zone, it's not allowed at all.
So CBD saying C was an error, then was actually already P.
Well, on this table, it's blank, so.
No, I'm saying C, CBD, oh, the printout of the sheet, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Copy I have has a, has a C in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not looking at that copy anymore.
Alright.
Yeah, my, my apologies, I didn't realize we had a glitch between versions. I, I didn't either, I should have looked at the PDF that we submitted so much so long, I, I just assumed that it matched. The table, the Excel.
The childcare home large, that just goes away?
Correct.
Oh, so, th- then the word small from the other one goes away too? It's just.
Yeah, it's just called family childcare home now.
Where, where did that go? I don't see it listed on the screen.
Where, what?
Family childcare.
Than they are.
Yeah, we were looking at different versions.
Well, because you guys, you guys made this change after we. In between all of this, so.
When they had all that stuff that came out, we had that meeting about what we were going to do that went on and it passed at city council, so I think that's where. This new stuff is coming from, but we didn't get this version.
Yeah, we did.
See, y'all just wanted to see if we really read it.
Actually, I had every, I had every confidence that if anybody read it, it was Valerie and then. Larry likes his homework too, you know, you, you two were, um, yeah, the A plus plus, um, yeah. Students.
Alright.
Alright, our next PC, although this is not PC in your current code, cause it looks like we had proposed a PC in the large retailer.
So.
Your current code.
Anything large like that?
Conditional.
Anything large like that, the public would want to comment, right?
Yeah, it's, yep, it's put commercials, another C, or C.
Conditional, conditional, conditional in those, yeah.
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 And then we don't need it, these two, it, it doesn't make sense to have a large retailer in there. Answered my own question.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, liquor, nope, not liquor store.
Retail uses, you have P, we have PCs.
Where do you have PCs?
Retail store.
No. It's P.
It's P right now.
Okay.
Okay.
A retail store in the heavy service.
Oh, do I need to go back to retail store?
Uh, Catherine's just pointing out that. In the previous version, there was a.
On the one we marked up, we put PC in all of them, including heavy service commercial. Light district.
Yeah. Under the heavy service, just put a P in, in that for retail store.
Sorry, which?
Heavy service, or for retail store, heavy service, on, on Jen's chart doesn't have a, it's not permitted.
I have no problem leaving the way it is without allowing it in that district.
No, I have to show him.
I'm still trying to find it in your existing code.
It's personal services, um, blank, HSC.
Retail sales.
I'll look at the one for personal services. We're not looking for HSC.
Commercial in the previous.
But if there's a building, they have sort of a mall there with some shops. Couldn't you next to the nail place or next to the car, or next to a coffee place, have a barber shop? It's, it's prohibited, it was written here.
So it's the line above it, above this.
Above.
The other way.
Yeah, the personal, that's where that.
Yeah, so, I will say, now, I finally found the retail sales, we, as you can see by this large. Section in, um, column B. We combined so many of your, um, detailed uses to make personal services and retail. And I'm just looking down in personal services and retail. Uses, although we collapse, are all Ps as they show on this table here, so they're. Ps in all of these, but not in the HSCLI.
That's okay.
That's correct. But for some reason in the chapter four, when we did our. Something in this table, it wound up with a PC and a heavy service commercial for some reason. No, if that was something, somebody suggested, but. Like the existing code, but.
Yeah, I mean, you, you might have. A store that services whatever the heck is in that heavy service area, right, you may have. May have services as well.
Well, well, you had a manufacturer who actually had a retail storefront on the front of the.
There you go, yeah, wonder, wonder bread outlet or whatever they do. Yeah.
Would you guys like to add a C to the HSCLI?
I think it'd probably be okay to do, add a C to it.
And same with personal services?
So just out of curiosity, if somebody does come to Woodland Park, they want to build something in a. Zone that it says not a permitted use. What do they do?
Come ask for a zone change.
They, they ask for a zoning change, right? And they do have hearing and public comment.
Where they find a, a piece of property that's appropriately zoned?
That's better, yeah, yeah.
And there's a provision we talked about last time called use is not itemized. And there's, we talked about that process, and somebody would say. I found this piece of property, I'd like to ask you to do that, staff would make a recommendation that, that, that sounds reasonable. Go to city council for final approval, then, then, then the, the application kind of follows on. At the same time, there's an amendment being processed. And if there's a C on the table, they'll have to then go back and get a conditional use permit.
Right.
You know, I, I, maybe they could do them simultaneously.
I, I'm, I'm getting very frustrating not following on the same table. Um, that, uh, you know, for instance. You got personal services on the screen right now, I'm looking at the copy that I've reviewed. And it's only one single. Uh, rows.
Right, but I think that's because she's added in all the definitions that we talked about.
Oh, I know, but it, it's, it's just that. There are cer- certain things on that thing, on the table up there that I don't have.
That I will give you, yeah.
And. It, it's just getting to be a little bit overwhelming.
One thing I'd like to note, cause we, you know, we went through all that stuff about outside storage. There's no outside storage in the lines on personal services, and if you go down to the thing in retail stores, there's a bunch of those that say. Excluding outside storage, excluding, so we gotta be consistent with the other part of the code. Cause we changed, we didn't have all of that.
Right.
Yep.
We're working on updating that.
Yeah.
So then do we just want to leave the personal services and the retail store is not allowed and then allow them to come back and. Ask for a zoning change, that way it's easier than. Conditional use permit, I. I can go either way with conditional or not having it. Allowed.
Yeah, we're veering off or just get the PCs, either P or C mandate here a little bit, but I do think if you put it as conditional. It's fine, but. If, if we don't change it, I think we're fine too, cause I don't think we have that much heavy service commercials. It's, it's real estate we're talking about, so.
It's next to the golf course is the only place I know.
I think we just leave it and.
As, as conditional?
I'm just leaving it like it is not allowed currently, retail store and the heavy service commercial.
Yeah, cause I'm looking at mine, it still says PC, so yeah, I got it.
Yeah, but.
No, I, I'm on the, I'm on the same page.
Yeah, we have the previous code, we have the marked up one, and we have the new one, and this is matching the previous code, so. I'm thinking, fine, we're just leaving it like it is for now.
Yeah. Alright, you guys good?
I'm sorry. Again, this is probably just because of the things, but my book has, has automotive, automotive and repair, it does that much stuff. And it has equipment rental in it, and furniture and appliance repair services in that same category, cause that's been moved around too. Just question. Light heavy auto storage or car wash, keep going down. Yeah, it's.
Furniture.
Oh, furniture and appliance repair?
Yeah, what, what would that be with automotive for?
Yeah, agreed.
Have to do with the repair. Automotive and repair, anything, I guess.
It's, but it's, it's home improvement company, so it's, I think it's just in the wrong place. Or something, I don't know.
Want to move to retail?
Make a note, Jen, yeah, I think, thank you, Jen, she's right now, I'm thinking about moving it, so we'll, we'll. Reflect on is that in the right spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I wondered that too.
Same with mobile home sales, I almost feel like we're missing a, a. Header break right there.
Something.
Yeah. Cause everything above this is automotive.
Well, yeah, and then you come down, but after, after mobile home, at least the one I have says service station, so.
It should be automotive.
Whatever that may be.
Well, yeah, it's automotive and repair.
Yeah, well, it.
I know, but it's. Automobile, not a.
Furniture.
She has a good point, it is kind of a funky grouping.
Yeah, it, it should go with.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reconsider these items kind of below this gray line, cause they seem a little bit odd.
A little weird.
Um. Here's a PC, mini storage.
Conditional.
So I still, I still see a whole bunch of PCs that we haven't.
They're, they're not there, don't worry about it. I don't know where those PCs came from.
Go up a little, just, please.
Yeah, no, that's, um, Larry, that's to your point earlier about the, the frustration between the versions.
So we'll just, we'll, yeah, okay.
But, um, with the mini storage, um, I do. I, I'm inclined to have that one be a, a conditional use, because, um, people have lots of stuff. And that's a, a pretty, um. I guess, popular or desirable way to, um, make money, to put up very inexpensive. Um, storage buildings and, and rent those out, um, that right now, since we don't have really robust standards. That would potentially go with something like that, I would think that, um, this community would appreciate that additional oversight of a conditional use permit.
Right.
In the heavy commercial, making them a C, is that what they're saying?
Yep, yep, heavy, commercial, heavy service.
Okay.
To a C. Right.
So Jen, as you scroll past all of these, can you go back up to the mobile home? Sales, service station, service station with truck and trailer. And I just want to match these up to what you have versus what I have printed in my book.
Alright. CP blank P.
Yeah.
I have PC. SC card.
Yeah, I do too, that's why I wanted to see what she had, so she's got P in all of those SCs.
But it clearly makes no sense to, yeah, it isn't, I think, they see then PC then C.
Well, but community commercials closer to the residential and CBD has got the residential built into it, right, with the central business district. So that makes sense to me, you permit it in the service commercial, but you make a conditional in the other two that could have residential in it.
Okay, well, that's, as I said, but PC, would, PC should become C.
She, they have it coming, they have it permitted for S, cause that's service commercial, right, so the C state, the CC stays C. The SC goes to Ps, the CBD stays C, and then the HSCLI goes to P.
And this, we discussed this before, or is this, I don't know.
I don't know, but that's what's on her screen. I'm just trying to match it up to what's in the book, so.
Okay, I sort of know in my book, it's like I'm, we've agreed, it's, it's discussed.
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss it, but.
It had PC in those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my book has PCs, so.
I'm sorry, PC, the service commercial had PC for service station, service station with truck and trailer.
And if you guys are looking in the, the draft that was submitted in last year. And don't, don't look at those PCs, we need to look at what is in the current code. Which for gasoline service station is exactly like this, CPC, and then the PC for beauty.
That's all. Trying to make ours match what this version says.
Now, this one, truck and trailer is a combination of so many things. You have a. You have two different things in your current code for truck and trailer rental, one has a C and a P, oh, that's this one right here. And then this one has a C, a P and a C.
Yeah.
And this, yeah, so this is per your current code right now.
Yes, I see that.
So in.
I really think what happened, guys, this, this table that we're looking at right here is the table we've been using for analysis this whole time. And I think what happened is, we used this for analysis, we put everything that was existing in here, and then there was a. It, you know, you get it transferred over to the actual Word document, and I think at that point, staff and. Um, our drafting person probably manipulated it further as they were reviewing the draft. I didn't realize that when I started using this document, I wanted to use the one that was the closest to your current code, so. I didn't go back to the draft you guys have, so I apologize for that, I'm sorry it's caused so much confusion, but I think this is what we really need to be looking at. Because I, Karen and I have no idea why those decisions were made.
Can we, Jen, can we just, you go down to the industrial section, cause there's some that I'm sure you've wore, you've already altered also, so, can we? Yeah, so the, the storage and contractor thing.
Jen, can you scroll back up?
I go.
Keep going.
Oh, contractor and construction.
Construction services, the R is under the HSCLI, it says. PC, so that's a P. And then that one's P.
Your current code says CC and P, just like this, uh, no, wait. I think it's in a different order here, yeah, it's CC and.
It's PP, and then there's after this gunsmith, there's light manufacturing and industry. Go down, which also has a PC in it, in our version. Which is a P. And this.
This one?
I thought we removed gunsmith, large scale as a category.
I don't remember. I want to be walking off the same page, I want to be looking at something we've already discussed, we've made changes. The, the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two copy is not, would. That's what I reviewed, I did review it, what we've made changes at this point. I, I, I'm, I'm feeling that we're spinning our wheels.
I, I, I'm, I'm feeling that we're spinning our wheels right now. I feel very frustrated. I'm almost ready to walk out of here and say. Let's have another work session on this while we are, are looking at the same page. I'm sorry, I'm just.
But Jen, that, to be clear, this is the current code.
This is what's in your current code, correct? And I believe this is the same table that Karen sent out to you all a couple of sessions ago? Didn't we send a table a couple of sessions ago, Karen?
I haven't gotten any other version of these tables. I don't know anybody else.
Maybe we didn't send that out. Maybe Karen and I just talked about using this for our discussions.
Yeah, um, and Larry, I hear you loud and clear. This is really quite frustrating, um, and I. I believe we've actually gotten through the majority of things where I had questions, where I wanted your feedback. Um, because I think closer to the bottom, it's more, um, um, like temporary uses and such, which really, uh, potentially. Uh, fall into a slightly different category, yeah, where you've got T U Ps and such, um. And then, um, yeah, when we're all on the same page, we can revisit, um, like the solar generation and the wind generation relative to. Um, what those standards are, um, and then of course, short-term rentals are a whole other beast that, um. You already made a, a, a solid recommendation to city council on, um, so I, I think for our purposes tonight, we've actually really gotten through where I had questions and was interested in your, your feedback on. On the existing, uh, PCs. Um, so as much as it's been frustrating, I found it helpful and I, I appreciate you all and, and what you provided.
So Karen, can I ask one? Or Jen, can you scroll back up to public utility facilities and explain to me why? Our cop, or I want to see what your copy says, because mine says PC, uh, through the residential, and I don't understand that.
It does.
So is that a legal thing we have to do, or that's in the current code, or? I mean, because I certainly don't want a transmission station next to my house. So I'm thinking those need to be Cs or not allowed, but at least minimum, at a minimum, a C. If you can check that, that would be great. But the rest of the page, Karen, I don't have an issue if we discuss the PCs later, because they're all new things.
I have one question, and Larry, I am so sorry about the frustration tonight. If I had realized you guys were looking in the, the book, I would have brought up a completely different document, but it would not have been right according to your existing. Are the, a lot of the things that were different tonight, are they in a different color in your draft too, or are they just black?
Black.
Okay, that is, okay, thank you. Um, I agree with Karen. I think we got what we needed out of this, and I don't know, I'll talk, I'll defer to Karen, but I. I think the next time we look at this table, it might be best if we bring it forward. Um, with all the changes we've talked about so far, and this won't be, you know, the next meeting, but all the changes we've talked about so far. With the definitions that we've changed, I think that's going to help all of us be on the same page.
And with the intent of the zoning districts flushed out, so, um, it's going to be a while before this comes back. Um, but we'll be taking a, a much more holistic look at it at that point. Um, like I said, I, I. The, the initial feedback's been great. It really has been helpful, um, because there, there were a couple that were the, the long hanging fruit kind of things to, to get taken care of. Um, and that's what we managed to accomplish tonight, and then, um. It's good to know we did have a little issue with versions, um, so. We'll be a little more cautious, um, and I will take a look again at that chapter three, but I do think that's, uh, potentially what we're going to look at next. And in there, there's a lot of, um, I think that's where the parking standards less landed and such, so. Um, I don't see us adjusting the number of required parking spaces or some of that kind of stuff, so it may be just be more. Um, kind of like what we did earlier in chapter four, that, okay, this makes sense, that makes sense, that's where it is, you know. Or, and Valerie's favorite, you got a numbering error, um. Or a code citation error, um, but, uh, that, that's my thought on what we'll be doing in the next work session. Any other thoughts, comments? Like I said, I do appreciate you all spending time doing this tonight, um. Sorry, my perspective. Well, and from my perspective, I'm glad I got a few minutes to like highlight some of the other projects we got going on, um, here at the city, so that, um. I do see all this coming together. It's just going to be a, a little bit before it does, so thank you very much.
Karen, I had one more comment on my notes on. The table under infrastructure, the very last one was recycling facility. I had commented out commercial, conditional in all the residential neighborhoods. Did that transpire into the X spreadsheet?
I thought we got rid of it completely.
Or that could be, I just have.
Yeah, that was. We had quite a discussion about infra, uh, yeah, recycling.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that didn't get lost in translation.
Oh, yeah, I, I showed that residential, there was nothing in, that was okay in that, all the Cs were gone. And that's probably what you have too.
Can we go back to the use table? Please?
Um, it'll be a second, Larry, Jen's scrolling, I can tell.
Need some volume.
She said it'll be a minute, Jen's scrolling.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't realize I was muted, sorry. I was saying, yes, I'll bring that back up.
Yeah, all those Cs, we, we already talked about that, and those were going to not be there. No, just the ones in the residential.
Looks like these are all proposed Cs anyway, so.
No, no, they were, oh, yeah, but they were, there was no, not even a C in the residential area.
Yep, that makes sense. I think we, we talked about that, it's in our other set of notes, so, yeah.
I'd like to make a recommendation too, that, you know.
Good catch.
Then instead of having all this language under the existing use collapsed info proposed use column. We add another column called. Standard citations. And instead of having. That portion I just, I just mentioned. If there's other conditions or standards that apply to a particular use, you can find it right on the table. Like referring to a code section. And that way you don't have to read through a paragraph to find, find out what it is. Seem like would just make a lot of sense to have that all in one place for our views.
So, yeah, in the formatted document, you'll have the use table without this column. It'll just have the uses and then all of your Cs and Ps. And then over to the right, we can add a column with a hyperlink to the section below where the standards are. Um, yeah, we can do that, and when we bring this forward to you all for our next review, in this Excel format, we can even have the definitions. Side by side if we want to. We, we can do whatever we need for reviewing purposes. Uh, for the formatted purpose, it'll kind of get all. Pulled into the right sections in the code.
Sounds good.
And actually tonight, I, I, this, this, I found this really helpful, because I was referring back to your existing code, and this helped me figure out what it was called currently. Uh, but I realize in the future that now that we've made, you know, agreed upon these new uses, that will start to go away. I don't know if that made any sense. It was helpful tonight to guide us. Anything else on that?
Karen, did you, did you have anything in reports beyond the, uh, presentation you made at the beginning of the meeting?
Not that I can think of at this moment, um, I might have the other day, but now it's, it's. I was so focused on the presentation, it's, it's, it's disappeared, so, um. Like I said, I just appreciate your time and attention, and I, I do apologize again that tonight turned out to be frustrating. Um, I, I did not anticipate that level of, of, of issues, um, but I just appreciate your time and attention. Um, you guys give a lot of your personal time to the, the city of Woodland Park on this particular committee. Um, I think out of all the other various boards and commissions, you guys do meet more than the rest of them. And, uh, so this really is a, a, a major dedication to the community, and then there's Valerie who just can't get enough of all of it, so she's. And just in the board of adjustment sitting in on these, um, so no, just thank you guys so much, and, um, I appreciate your support as we. Continue to, to work on a variety of projects and, um, evolve how the department functions, so, um, just, just thank you.
Unless somebody has something else for good, item five of the agenda? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Good night.